All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 8th, 2024 Town of Gray Planning Board Meeting. I hereby call the meeting to order. First up is roll call. Tamara?
Present.
Genya?
Present.
And I'm Dan Cobb, also present. Melinda is excused, right? She talked to you, Kristen, so...
She brought it up at the last meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. So she will not be here. Next up is minutes approval. This would be approval of our January 11 minutes. Did anyone have any comments or corrections? Me either. Is there a motion to approve as submitted?
Second.
I need a motion first, sorry. I can't make the motion, so...
I move we approve the minutes as submitted.
I'm seconding.
All right, all in favor? Genya? I didn't see about...
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's unanimous. Okay. Moving right along, information exchange. Any information, Kristen, from the planning department?
Sure. We had originally intended to do a joint meeting with the Open Space Committee tonight, but we didn't have availability from enough folks, so looking for thoughts on rescheduling that, and when might be a convenient time. Ideally, it would be together with the Open Space Group. If we need to split it up, we could do it separately, but kind of, the idea was kind of for you guys to talk together. So I didn't know if you're open to doing that six o'clock before the March meeting, if the agenda isn't chock full, or another time.
Yeah, you probably don't know that yet, do you? What the agenda's shaping?
No, it's probably shaping up to be at least two items, but one of them, I think, is going to be sketch. So neither of them seem like a heavy lift right yet, but y'all know better early next week.
I'm not going to be here in March.
Oh, that's right.
For work. And I want to say, actually, that the Chair of the Open Space Committee will also be traveling for work.
Okay.
Well, there you go. So I guess it won't be that meeting.
So not before, is that the whole month, or?
No, it's just that, it's that
That week?
That same week as the planning board meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, she's on the same work trip as me.
Right, right. Okay, so not that week. Are you guys open to doing a different night?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it would depend on the night.
Potentially?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's not going to be like a heavy lift thing anyway. It'll probably be maybe an hour and a half. Okay, I'll keep you posted. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
What's the next, Campbell Akers subdivision amendment, as was approved by the board, is ready to sign? If we can remember to do that before you guys head out.
That's out back, back of the room. Yeah, so make sure, don't scoot out on Kristen, or you'll make a separate trip to the town office.
I let Melinda know, too, to please come by and sign when she gets a moment.
Yeah.
And then, just as a heads up, typically when a town has a project on the property line, on the town line, they give us a heads up, and Wyndham has done so, so I just noted that in the memo, that they have a subdivision coming that abuts the town line for Gray near Alpine Drive. So if you're interested in learning anything about that, that's all posted on the website.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else?
On my end.
All right. Anything from the council, Marty?
No.
Okay, thanks. Anything from the board? And I have nothing either, so we'll keep continuing on. Okay, next up is continued business. This is area estates amendment to Eagle Ridge subdivision preliminary and final plan review. A request by Sebago Realty LLC, represented by DH Roma Consulting Engineers, for preliminary review and final plan review of a proposal to create a 14-lot residential open space subdivision on the 41-plus-or-minus-acre parcel off Eagles Nest Road at tax map 63, lot 35-24, on the remaining land in the Eagles Ridge subdivision in a rural residential and agricultural zoning district. The proposal is subject to major subdivision plan review.
Good evening. My name is JP Conley. I work for DH Roma Consulting Engineers, and I'm here representing Sebago Realty LLC. And tonight, we have area states amendment to Eagle Ridge subdivision. And I'm going to try to be as brief as I can, because I think there are a few points that I'd just like to hit, and we're going to move on. At this point, we feel like we've, we're confident that we've provided a plan that has addressed all of your concerns, with a couple of minor things to work out. As, and I think we just go through the, kind of, in order of the memo.
So before you do that, let's, if, what I would like to propose, because there's a lot of bullets there, and I'm sure you agree with most of them. So I was not planning on stepping bullet by bullet
No, neither was I.
Through everything, so please focus on anything that you disagree with.
Sure, sure.
That's different, because, you know, our discussion, I think we're basically going to support most everything that the staff has to suggest and that the town engineer has to suggest, so there's no need for us to agree on everything that we're going to agree on.
Certainly, and definitely in agreement with you. So the town consulting engineers comments, we've addressed all of those, and I believe we've had, we do have a letter from the town review engineer stating that, and stating that he's satisfied with the revisions that we've made. And then, as far as the comments per town staff, I'd like to direct your attention to number four. And in particular, it's the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth bullet, and I'll read it. Delineate common park areas more clearly with shading and dimensions to show, to be shown on the face of the plan. So what I've done is I've added some line work to it to delineate the limits of what we call the open space gathering area. There, there's another comment later on, that it should be a common park area. We can refer to it either way in the final plan, whatever the board prefers. But those areas have been basically delineated on the plan. What I'm going to do is add a couple of callouts specifying dimensions in addition to that. As far as the next one, I'd like to take you to, would be with regards to the lot shape perimeter boundary. As we talked about, Lot 1's shape was a little odd. We've changed that. When we walked away from the meeting last time, we had a pretty good idea of what was being asked of us, and so... But when we started to talk about it internally, we realized we may not have exactly what the board was looking for. But what we've done is we've provided the perimeter boundary around all the lots, with the exception of Lot 1. And we weren't clear if there was, you were looking for a partial easement across, or a partial buffer across that piece, so that it, the 30-foot continued around the whole strip, or if you were satisfied with the lot shape. So depending on what the board wants us to do, we're open to addressing it either way. But the plan you have in front of you does not show a 30-foot buffer along the entirety of that back.
I thought we all aligned on the partial 30-foot buffer, last meeting.
We, I think, I think that's where you ended up, too, but we weren't sure. So what we did is we showed it this way, which kind of, we, Dustin and I, kind of came together with. If you don't like it, we can adjust it.
Can you point us to a page?
It would be to the subdivision plan, if I can pull the...
I want to bring it over here, too.
Sir! Yeah, that would be fine.
So it's, it's in the memo as being the entirety of the back of the lot.
Page 1. Yeah.
I think he's on it.
You don't have the plug-in thing?
No, I do.
I think you may just have to click on it, or... Yes, okay.
So my recollection that it was that that 30-foot strip went, like, it was some number of feet, I forget what it was, but of course, the lot had that different shape as well.
Yeah, we can make that change, and we have no issue with that. We presented it this way, hoping you'd consider it, but if you'd like it revised, we're more than happy to. The only difference between what we're showing here and what would be there is that we'd have to offset the lost area into the open space of B. So it's just pushing that northeasterly sideline a little deeper into the lot, into open space.
Any preferences? On behalf of the board?
I just see the perimeter, and it bumped up. I don't mind that it's not going to be a rectangle.
Let me just point out, too, is this area is actually also open space.
Right.
It actually runs here, runs this perimeter all the way around, and here. Some areas that we're still going to read here that really should be yellow, that kind of connects all this together, so that this land also contiguous all the way around. And then, a waiver request, as we're partying tonight, is only limited to really just that little 60-foot switch there, just so that we end up with a, you know, on the tax maps, and as far as people measuring property lines, they have a nice square lot, and this area is so steep, I mean, there's no way to build in that area. It kind of comes down the hill, so if this area were to stay as open space instead of being part of the lot, it's really just lost in that hill anyway, so it would just, this is a better, like, long-term geometry for the lot, as opposed to having it come up here and then loop around that corner. So the waiver request is, is limited just to that one little spot there.
I think we've heard two of the board would like to see the perimeter extended, so... Unless what he just said changes your mind. I mean, it seems to make sense to me, more sense to me, that the perimeter continue as well. I mean, I'm not, I agree with the other two. So I think that's where we're at.
Just put Lot 1 back to the way it was, basically.
Yeah, no problem. We can address that.
Yeah.
So the last thing that I want to talk about is the concern with regards to the DEP site law application. Excuse me, Site Location of Development Act. So our project does not meet the requirements for site law. It's, things that trigger site law would be large, large developments, 15-plus lots or more than 30 acres of developed area. If this project were considered as part of the Eagle Ridge subdivision, that could potentially take us into the threshold for site law. However, you know, based on the DEP's definition of common scheme of development, which is what would we have to meet to be basically required to meet this load application? It, the, the definition reads, "Common scheme of development means a plan or process of development which takes place on a contiguous or non-contiguous parcels or lots in the same immediate vicinity." And, and this is a big "and," this is the qualifying "and," that's "the exhibits characteristics of a unified approach, method, or effect, such as unified ownership, management, or supervision, sharing of common equipment or labor, and common financing." None of those, in this case, would be applicable. The project is not under unified ownership. Eagles Ridge is completely different from Sebago Realty. There's no nexus between the two. Construction, we're going to be utilizing different contractors. This is, Eagles Ridge was constructed 10 to 20 years ago, so we don't even know if those contractors are still around. And then, as far as financing goes, there's no money connection between Sebago Realty and Eagle Ridge subdivision. They're two separate entities. The 42-acre parcel that we are working on is a retained land parcel that was split from the larger 112-acre parcel that was developed as part of Eagle Ridge by Blackwater Development, and our parcel consists of undeveloped land. It was shown as retained land and not part of that subdivision. So we, based on our experience with the DEP, and even experience in Gray, when the DEP sees things that are potentially site law, or even think, they think that the permit that we've submitted doesn't meet what we need to submit, we get immediate attention, and the DEP will not issue permits. So I am very confident at this point that the DEP will not be requiring a site law application for this project. And however, with the fact that I don't have a crystal ball to the future, and I have made mistakes in the past, if the DEP were to say, "No, we do need to come back for a site law application," it would simply mean that we'd have to go through the routine of getting that permit, making whatever revisions they need, and then come back to the board. It would be the same as, in the event, we go out and don't construct the road. Say the road needs blasting, and they don't blast to state standards for quarries, we'd have to meet that one as well. So their DEP, US Army Corps, any federal agency, we have to meet all those requirements independently of the town. It's really good that the town does take the time and energy to make sure and assure that we've had those permits in place. But at this time, we just aren't getting the response that we need from the DEP. We've reached out numerous times, and it just doesn't seem like something they want to reply to or pick up. It seems as though they would like to have an application in front before they, you know, full paperwork and everything before they want to reply. I know that the planner's reached out several times, and she's gotten no response, or limited response, if any. So unfortunately, you know, we've pushed this as far as we really feel comfortable pushing it with the DEP. We don't want to harass them over this, and so, but at the same time, too, we're confident that won't be required, and we do have all the permits in hand at this point in time.
Okay. Any, any questions from the board about that? Okay.
Aside from that, I have nothing else to really discuss at length, and I'm open to any questions you guys might have.
Okay, I think we're in pretty good shape so far. I don't have any questions. Tamara? Genya, any questions?
I had one comment. So town consulting engineer suggested to do the study of the, based on the 100-years weather event, and increase the spillway. And I went through the checklist for the project, and like, 100% 100-year storm not applicable. Says on the checklist. One, really.
I can speak to it.
Care to comment?
Sure. He's correct. The, they, the, there is really no mention of the 100-year analysis. But in this case, I, I kind of, I side with the peer review engineer, and we provided those calculations to show that the spillway doesn't overtop either spillway. Doesn't, or berm does not overtop in the 100-year event. The ponds function very well. The, like I said, the, the water surface stays below, it, it leaves through the spillway, but doesn't overtop the top of berm. We have freeboard before that would be triggered. And I think that's just what he wanted to see, to make sure that the berms were sized appropriately, and in the event we do have some sort of catastrophic storm event, we don't have the banks of the berms washing out, and, you know, they are, especially the filter basin at the entrance, it is close to some nice, nice natural areas. We don't want to fill them with berm sediment and gravel and such, so... But we've submitted that to the peer review, and he was satisfied with our, our results.
All right, thanks. Can I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, great. So let's see, before we get into our deliberations, we've had our public hearing on this. I do see at least one person in the room and one online, so I'd be happy to extend a quick offer to speak if either of them were so inclined. I see a no from the room. And I'm not seeing, no questions from me. Great, thank you. So we will not have a public hearing then, since there's nobody else left. So we'll move on to our deliberations. So I guess, I didn't want to speak for the board, but as far as all the consulting engineer comments and town staff comments, were there any differences of opinion, or?
No.
Okay, I didn't have any either, so I think we're all aligned at this point on that, then. And then, our other topic would be the site location development, and whether we would be comfortable moving forward with conditional approval without that written confirmation. I know you voiced some concerns at a previous meeting, I think, on this.
I think it's just a matter of what they, what the staff has recommended is the, including this number 11
Yeah.
Condition. So I'd be comfortable with those kinds of things.
Yeah, me too. And I don't have anything else. I think we're pretty much good to go. I know we have one proposed, uh, well, I'll need to find it complete before we move forward, but I guess we could do that now.
I can offer you kind of an updated waiver language, if you want it. I had the waiver and the draft language
Yeah.
entirety of the buffer, so if you want to use this, that it's
Okay, I was going to do that after, but
What are you getting at?
Yep. Okay, let's, let's find it complete and start working through that. So would anyone care to make the first motion to find the application complete?
Making a motion to find the application complete.
So I think, if you look in the memo, just to help you out a little bit, on page five, Kristen has just more complete language for the motion.
Draft motion?
Yep, so you could basically read that text, is our typical
To find subdivision amendment application materials complete. Move to find the application by Sebago Realty LLC, represented by DH Roma Consulting Engineers, complete per chapter 401, 7, 1E. This proposals, proposal is to create a 14-lot residential open space subdivision on the 41-plus-or-minus-acre parcel of the Eagle Nest Road at the tax map 63, lot 35-24, on the remaining land in the Eagles Ridge subdivision in a rural residential and agricultural zoning district. This proposal is subject to major subdivision plan review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
No discussion here either? All in favor? That's 3-0, so we are complete. Okay, so then the waiver, we made some changes. I think it sounds like Kristen has made updates to the language. So you want to go ahead and make that motion?
Move to approve the following waiver for the request by Sebago Realty LLC, represented by DH Roma Consulting Engineers for a proposal to create a 14-lot residential open space subdivision on the 41-plus-or-minus-acre parcel off Eagles Nest Road at tax map 63, lot 35-24, on the remaining land in the Eagles Ridge subdivision in a rural residential and agricultural zoning district. The proposal is subject to major subdivision plan review. The waiver is a partial waiver of the 401.13.13.b.1 requirement for a 30-foot perimeter buffer to the side property line in the rural residential agricultural zoning district, allowing an exception for a portion of the rear property line on Lot 1, where it abuts the open space B.
Is there a second?
I'm seconding.
Okay, so I've got some discussion. I guess it's just a question, but that brings us back to what the proposed waiver was at the last meeting, right? That's the same language?
Yeah, partial, so the perimeter buffer remains?
Yeah.
Where it abuts the lot in Eagles Ridge existing subdivision, but you're waiving it where it abuts open space B.
Yeah, and that, yep, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? All right, that's 3-0 on the modified waiver. Okay, and then we have a combined motion to grant preliminary and final approval. So we had one placeholder that I think we'll
Well, we had 11.
11 was a placeholder. I think we would agree that, that that would need to be included.
The part of number 4 would need to be
Right, so I was just looking at 4.
Yeah.
Number, number 6 is still right, because that was older.
Oh. Oh, I see, so we just used 6, so we don't need the
No, you do, you, you still need 4. I had two references to it. One was older.
Okay.
Just saying, I should update the plans, but actually, listing the waiver, number 4, so...
Okay.
Kind of relooking at it.
So to keep this streamlined, I'm thinking you read the preamble, reference conditions 1 through 12, and then maybe specifically read
4.
4, right? Or the revision to 4, however you want to do it.
Move to approve the preliminary plan and final plan applications by Sebago Realty LLC, represented by DH Roma Consulting Engineers to create a 14-lot residential open space subdivision on the 41-plus-or-minus-acre parcel off Eagles Nest Road at tax map 63, lot 35-24, on the remaining land in the Eagles Ridge subdivision in a rural residential and agricultural zoning district. The proposal is subject to major subdivision plan review, and the approvals are subject to the following conditions, 1 through 12, listed in the planning memo, update, January 30th, 2024 planning memo, with the amendment to 4 as follows. The planning board approves the following waivers at the December 14th, 2023 meeting. Dead-end streetlight for 401.13.15(c).4, stone concrete monuments at all corners, 401.13.1d partial, and approval of the following waiver at the February 8th, 2024 meeting. 30-foot perimeter buffer to the side property line, 401- 30 foot perimeter buffer to the side property line, 401 dot 13 dot 13 B dot 1, allowing a portion of the rear property line of lot number one to be exempt from the 30 foot perimeter buffer requirement where it abuts the open space B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? That's three, nothing. Congratulations two times on preliminary and final approval. All right. That wraps that one up, so all we have left is a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, and we are done at.
Please remember to sign the.
Seven, four, yes.
When's our next meeting?